Okay, I'd like to call to order, call the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five Planning Commission Regular Meeting to Order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom online by visiting www.Cityofarcada.org and following the live meetings link at the bottom of the city's homepage or on the city's YouTube channel. If you are attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest to real time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. The first item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as Gudane, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Staff, will you please call role?
Yeah, Commissioner Hamm?
Here.
Commissioner Davies?
Here.
Commissioner Strickland?
Here.
Commissioner Tagney?
Here.
Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
Your nameplates are switched. That's okay, though. It was one of those, you know, read the word red, see the word blue things for me. And Chair Simmons?
Here.
And we are joined today by Community Development Director David Loyah. Next on our agenda, we have oral communications during this time. People may make comments about items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to speak on one of our agenda items, you will have an opportunity when we are discussing those items. If you have comments about items that are not listed on our agenda today, please line up now behind the lectern. If you're on Zoom and you wish to make comments on matters that are not on today's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the raise hand icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing star nine on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. With that, I'd like to open public comments. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment during early oral communications. Feel free to state your name for the record. No one is here in the audience. Do we have anyone online? Okay, with no public in attendance, I am going to close this item and move on to the consent calendar. We have one item on consent, which is to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes of our regular meeting on August twelfth, twenty twenty five. Would any commissioner like to pull the item or do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Anyone want a second?
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I think that was everyone in favor. Okay, so we have one public hearing tonight, which is initiate adoption of the comprehensive update to the city's local coastal program, which is statutorily exempt from CEQA guideline section fifteen two six five. Staff, can we please begin with a report?
Yeah, good evening, Commission. As the staff report indicates, we're going to need to continue this item one more time, but I did want to take the opportunity to provide a little bit of input or opportunity for input based on the information that we're getting back from the Coastal Commission. I wanted to express to you and explain to you the process we're going through just so you can better understand what's going on and then also to share with you the documents. If there are any, you know, more substantive conversations that you want to have about the detail in those documents, we can do that as well. But I wanted to take, take this opportunity to cover those couple of things. So let me just start with the LCP update process updated PowerPoint presentation here. The, the staff, as the staff report indicates, staff are working with the Coastal Commission staff to do final edits on the local coastal program. I explained last time we had to continue that the sea level rise policies that the city is proposing are being interpreted by the Coastal Commission is in conflict with the Coastal Act. And what they are working with us to do is to do conflict, conflict resolution. In the Coastal Act, when you have two, two policy areas that are in conflict with one, one with each other, excuse me. They, the Coastal Commission has the ability to resolve and say, well, if not for this, which is, you know, in conflict with the Coastal Act, then you would also have this impact that is in conflict with the Coastal Act. And so we can allow for the one because we are trying to avoid the other. And so that conflict resolution process is what staff is working on really explicitly around sea level rise policy. And as I mentioned last time, those are not the types of changes that the Coastal Commission can make a recommendation for, for edits through the certification process. So we're really trying to resolve on those issues right now. We've had several meetings with them. We're at this point meeting with the Coastal Commission staff weekly to go over the outstanding issues. They're meeting with their executive, develop, executive team next week. And so we hope to start getting some, some, you know, solid feedback on our, you know, policy changes that we've made and et cetera. So last time I had kind of continued on the fly up until this date, anticipating that three months would be, you know, sufficient time for us to sort through those issues. They've asked for an additional amount of time. We've kind of settled on another three months. So really what we're going to be asking at the end of this hearing for you to do is to continue this item to your February seventeenth meeting. And that'll be by a formal action. So the content that I want to provide for you today is just a quick update for you and the public to understand where these edits are going. So here I've got an image of our local coastal program update page. You can navigate to this by going to departments, planning, and then under regulations, you'll find the LCP update. On this page, we have links right here that we're loading up the most recent versions of these draft edits. So as we're working with coastal staff, they've given us feedback. We've made proposed changes. They're taking a look at them. Right now, the ones that are on this webpage are the, what coastal staff has in, in their hands to comment on. I anticipate going through a couple of different iterations and rounds of this sort of back and forth editing to get to a point where we've at least resolved the, the conflict resolution components with sea level rise. And my hope is that we will have addressed all of the concerns that coastal staff have between now and then. This is a formal hearing, but I anticipate bringing this information back to you as we get it so that you can weigh in on it between now and February. So if you follow those links, you can open up, for example, the coastal zoning ordinance. These are the draft edits. I've indicated the version because we'll probably have several versions of these with the date. So this is the October seven, twenty twenty five coastal zoning ordinance draft edits. Looking just at random at chapter two point one four, we've been working on the accessory dwelling units section. This is an area where it's fairly complex because we have the Coastal Commission input, but we also have HCD who's trying to provide input as well. And we need to try and consistify against both state law and LCP and then our, our local ordinances. And so here's an area where there's going to be a lot of changes, I anticipate, as we work through that process with the other agencies. But what you can find right now on our website in this track changes version is sort of our first crack that we gave to coastal staff. We've already had a couple of meetings with the coastal staff and, and in particular, their person who works closely with the HCD. And we are aware that this is not going to cut it. So you're going to see changes in this ADU section. What they've given us back is an eleven page ordinance, which we've kind of pushed back on and said, that's a little much. That's, you know, not what we're anticipating seeing in here. And coastal staff has already indicated to us that they agree that a lot of the things that HCD is asking for in that ordinance don't pertain to the Coastal Act. They don't pertain to things that they feel like need to be in the LCP. And so I'll get into this a little bit more in depth in our next presentation that I'd, I'd like to present to you. But basically, we're taking and carving out components of the ordinance that will not need to be in the LCP and putting it elsewhere in our zoning ordinances, our citywide zoning ordinance. So this is just an orientation to how you can track the changes that are being done. And I do have to apologize if you went and tried to look at the, the local coastal element prior to today. The, the way that the PDF was generated, it eliminated, it just accepted changes. So you wouldn't have seen the track changes in that version. If you look today, you will see those track changes versions. So from this day going forward, on that LCP website, you'll be able to see current changes as they, as the Coastal Commission is looking at them, and then I'll update those with the revisions. Does that make sense?
Not really. I, I mean, in part, general, generally, yes. I'm confused as to why the Coastal Commission is weighing in on building codes in the City of Arcata. That seems excessive and like it's guaranteed to be time consuming and unproductive. I don't really understand that.
They're weighing in on only the components that will end up in the local coastal program. And so they're, they're looking at the ordinances that we've put together and evaluating whether or not that is sufficient to address land uses and development in the coastal zone. Where they've suggested that it's not sufficient, staff is proposing amendments to try and make them sufficient. And so we're going back and forth with this. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but it feels a little frustrating to have it taking this long and then having them further delay. Something that feels to me like the City of Arcata is well able to, has already done the work on these kind of codes. I don't know.
Yeah. No, I get it. And, you know, because the Coastal Commission has to, it's basically giving its authority to regulate development through the Coastal Act to the City of Arcata. It's giving up its land use authority. And they, they certify that the local land use authority is sufficient to regulate based on, you know, the Coastal Act, the way that they would regulate, is why they have a say in, in our process. I can tell you that, you know, it, it, it is frustrating to delay. You know, we, we've all, I think, experienced the frustration, the amount of work that we're putting into it is quite considerable. But I am happy to report that, you know, I feel like the conversations we're having are very productive and we're making progress with the Coastal Commission staff sort of hand in hand as they're reviewing it with their executive team. So I anticipate a much, you know, more productive result as, as, you know, because of the process that we're going through. And so, yeah, I'd like it to go faster, too. I would have liked to have adopted it back months ago when we first looked at it. But, you know, I do recognize that, you know, they, they would not be able to recommend certification. And I believe that the, the Coastal Commission would not certify our LCP based on where it was at in June. And by the time we get to February, I believe we will have had enough time to, to resolve those, those differences of opinions.
Thank you. Yeah, Dan?
Yeah, as an example, on the accessory dwelling units, are they pushing for less development, less residential? Or more? Or what's the conflict?
Yeah, so the, the accessory dwelling unit is an interesting bit of code because basically the, the state, state law requires that ADUs be principally permitted, that anyone can come in and get an over the counter permit. And in fact, there was a law adopted just today that cuts down the time that the city has to tell someone whether they have a complete or incomplete application to fifteen days, and then we have sixty days to approve it once they have a complete application. So there's, there's a lot of pressure from the state to make ADUs in particular, a very streamlined way for people to, to build new units. So when it comes to the LCP, that, that doesn't change. They, the LCP has to have a ministerial pathway. Everything, everything in the coastal zone is typically very process intensive. And so they want to make sure, the Coastal Commission wants to make sure that when we have these ministerial approvals for accessory dwelling units, that any, anything associated with the, the Coastal Act, anything associated with coastal resources, anything that potentially could have, you know, gone wrong that we would have caught in a discretionary decision making process is baked into the accessory dwelling unit legislation into our, our local code. And so there's, the Coastal Commission is really interested in making sure that our accessory dwelling unit ordinance is, is complete. And then we have this overlay of the state. Now, the state, HCD, close your ears, the state has been crazy with ADUs. I mean, you know, they have changed the ADU legislation multiple times a year for years on end. The, the legislation, the, the state legislation where ADU law is housed, became a complete Frankenstein over the years. It was almost impossible to, to read and to implement effectively. HCD has done their best to provide, you know, guidance, but it is still, it's changing on a regular basis. It changed just today, which is part of the reason why the city has said, hey, look, let's reference state law. If state law changes, we'll continue to make sure that our local ordinance is compliant with state law because changing an ordinance is very expensive. Takes a lot of my time, a lot of your time. We go through all this noticing. There's all, it's, it's not a cheap process to amend the, the ADU law, right? The ADU ordinance. And so if the state's going to change the ADU ordinance five, six times a year, two, three times a year, we're not going to keep up. Our ordinance is going to become out of date. It's going to have standards in it that aren't consistent with the state. And we'll be right back in the situation we're in today where we can't implement our local ordinance because it's not compliant with the state. And the state law is going to say, if you're not compliant with this state law, then implement state law. So our approach has been with ADUs to put as little as possible in our local ordinance and reference state law. So if you think about that minimalist approach I just described that helps us stay consistent with state law and the maximalist approach that the Coastal Commission wants us to take to make sure that whatever is in the LCP, they can rely on. They know that things are going to get permitted based on that. We have this inherent sort of conflict of approach. And so that's, that's where a lot of the conversation is coming in. And what we've challenged our, our working group that's working on this to do is to come up with the minimum necessary code. So it's only what is absolutely necessary, and this is true not only of ADUs, but throughout the, the code, only what's minimally necessary to regulate land uses compliant, consistent with the Coastal Act. So there's, there's a lot of moving parts in there. I think the, the state HCD would like us to just basically adopt a template ordinance that regurgitates state law. That's going to become out of date as soon as they, you know, change one of those elements. Our approach would be to, you know, point to other areas in the code where we're already consistent with state law. In fact, generally speaking, the city has been more lenient with accessory dwelling units than the state law is. For instance, they limit ADUs to, for example, sixteen feet in height in some situations. City of Arcata has already, you know, established like in a residential low zoning district, low density zoning district that we allow for twenty feet, twenty five feet in height. And so we allow ADUs to be twenty five feet in height. And so we can point to our code and say that ADUs need to be consistent with the city's standard, which is above the state's standard. And so we don't need to bake in that special provision. We've already got it covered. So we're kind of walking through like all the minutia. That's one example of, you know, fifty.
Who takes precedence in the coastal zone, the state law or?
This is, this is one where they are bound at the hip and there's no arm wrestling allowed. The, the process, and this is why the Coastal Commission is so interested in getting this right from the start. Because they have to have a ministerial process. The other thing that changed in state law today with respect to ADUs is that ADUs in the coastal zone are no longer appealable. So they want to make sure that they get it absolutely right from the start, they being the Coastal Commission. So they have a mandate to have ministerially approved ADUs, state ADUs. And we're trying to create a process that allows for that. HCD also wants ministerially approved ADUs, but HCD can't supersede the Coastal Act. So it's, it's kind of like this great little lover's triangle where we're like, you know, waiting for, for, you know, someone to blink.
And every coastal city up and down the state is dealing with the same thing right now.
Yeah, and, you know, dealing with it in many different kinds of ways. Some agencies are just folding and saying, tell us what you want to do. We'll do it, whatever it is. And I'll be frank, there are many elements of this LCP update where I feel like that is our community's approach. You know, just tell us what you want to be in this document. We don't have, you know, strong opinion on, you know, that particular standard. You know, a good example of that would be, you know, a setback. If they want it, they don't want it to be ten feet like it is now, and they want it to be fifteen. I don't think we have a very strong opinion of that. Just tell me it needs to be fifteen and we'll change the text. There are other things where we feel very strongly, our sea level rise approach, our general approach to minimizing, you know, the amount of text and creating as little overlap between documents as possible. Those are the things where, you know, we feel more strongly and we've been trying to hold the line a little bit more. And, you know, to Coastal Commission's credit, you know, they, they respect that and they're helping us to, to navigate that.
So you're hearing from the state about changes to ADU law and you're hearing from the Coastal Commission regarding their concerns about our local coastal program. But does the legislative body creating ADU changes at the state level communicate also with the Coastal Commission?
Through HCD they do.
Got it.
Yeah, so HCD and the Coastal Commission are meeting on a regular basis.
Okay.
This has become a huge body of work.
I understand better now. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for stopping me before I said my next sentence.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
You mentioned that sea level rise adaptation was one of the sort of sticking points, I think.
Sea level rise is the sticking point. It's the only body of policy where we're proposing something that, on the face of it, conflicts with state law, with the Coastal Act. And so we have differences of opinion, I think, between the city, city staff and Coastal Commission as to how significant that conflict is. But at the end of the day, the Coastal Commission is the one that gets to certify the document. So we're working through their interpretation to, to try and do balancing between different coastal policies to allow us to implement the sea level rise policy as we've designed it.
What's the germ of the conflict? That's part of your?
Yeah, let me, let's see. Let me skip out of this real quick and jump to that. Okay, I actually don't have the slide I was hoping to see, but the, the germ of that is basically that the Coastal Commission's interpretation, generally speaking, is that development that was built before enactment of the Coastal Act nineteen seventy six is allowed to be protected by, you know, revetments, you know, other hard structures. Development that was developed after the Coastal Act is not entitled to that same kind of protection. And so you can, seawall, berm, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And so one of the things that, you know, we've all been struggling with in in this sector for a decade or more is that sort of patchwork protection essentially creates, you know, permeable protections that, you know, don't really protect the structures. Because the water goes around if your neighbor wasn't built before. One of the things that we've been sort of interpreting or using to interpret or to utilize that that provision in the Coastal Act is that we're really talking about protecting all of the infrastructure on the South G and H streets that are, you know, in the zone that's vulnerable. And that entire structure was built before 1976. And so there's differences of opinions about how we approach that. But to me, it's, it's, it's less important that the city's perspective wins out. It's more important that we find a way to work together to come up with something that works for both the Coastal Commission and the city. And so I think we're honing in on that. And so basically what what their current approach is, is they're asking us, well, how does, how does this balance against water quality, for example? Because there's a lot of potential water quality contaminants in the South G and H street area. We have our, you know, treatment plant, there's not trash more, there's sewer lines, there's, you know, legacy industrial sites, so on and so forth. All of these things, if we were to just say, hey, look, we're not going to protect these areas from this point forward as the waters come, let them come, because, you know, most of this wasn't built before 1976, then all of those contaminants are basically in a wash into the bay and become part of the, you know, tidal cycle or, you know, the extreme event cycle that that impacts, you know, you know, the bay, the the biota, the, you know, the the health of the bay. So that's kind of the policy balancing water quality versus sea level rise that they're working on right now. And I'm encouraging us in our conversations to, you know, think broadly. Are there other policies that were in conflict with potentially, you know, agricultural resources, for example, or, you know, others? So that we can try and stitch together a policy framework that allows us to do the type of small scale planning, you know, for primarily the South G and H streets. And I do have some slides that would be helpful for for this conversation. So maybe if I could jump back real quick to the updates and then we can dig into those topics. Okay, so, so just wrapping up on this, the important pieces are, these are on the website. They're being listed by the date that they're produced. It's the working version that I'm coordinating with the Coastal Commission. You'll see these and track changes. We also have a couple of map amendments since the last time the Planning Commission looked at this in June. One is that we we left off a couple of properties that are in the, at the end of Spear and beginning of Jane's Road here. We made the rest of this residential medium, but we lost this one block. And so we're proposing to make those ones residential medium as well. I don't have an area I can dig into it if you want to see it, but most of these parcels are already built out at residential medium densities. And so it makes sense to call them that. So we've updated our map. We're going to ask the Planning Commission ultimately to recommend this land use map, which includes this change from the last time you saw it. One other change from the last time you saw it, we have this new commercial visitor serving designation that encompasses the South G and H street areas. There's a lot of industrial, some commercial and a lot of residential in here. This would allow new land uses on all of these properties that would be more commercial serving, visitor serving. You know, think hotel, you know, kite shops, board short shops, et cetera, et cetera. More, you know, restaurants and tourism type places like, you know, the taproom down there. I'm sorry, ribbon curtain. So those, you know, imagine this area over the next, you know, 20, 30 years transitioning away from full on industrial to more, you know, commercial visitor serving, that's the intent behind this zone. We are proposing to add the Little Lake site into that. There's been some desire among the council to, you know, consider maybe a hotel or something of that nature on this site. And so we've expanded that.
Is it clean now?
It is, it is, we're still waiting on final results from the the last excavation. We went in and excavated the majority of the contamination and did sampling along the walls and floor. And we found an area that was a little hotter than we wanted to leave it. So we went back and excavated that. If you go by the site today, you'll see they're filling in with base rock in the bottom part of it. And so when that confirmation sampling comes back in, we'll be clear. And then it will be cleaned up to to a standard.
Is that city land?
It is city land. Yep, belongs to the city of Arcata. So that's another change that you'll see in terms of map amendments. Otherwise, your last, the last time you saw this map and were ready to recommend on it, those, the rest of it hasn't changed. Okay, so just real quickly, the adoption timeline, we've got our two hearings tonight and then tomorrow night with the city council. Those were continued hearings. Again, we'll be continuing these to late February, early March of next year. We do anticipate bringing this to your body as business items as we get new updates. The idea here is to check in if there's anything that's changing that the commission wants to take a look at and comment on. Are we in the right direction, wrong direction? So we'll continue to do that as business items. And then we're going to be asking, as I mentioned earlier, for you to continue your hearing to February 17th, 26, not 25, 26. 20, 25 is passed. Okay. Okay, so that's kind of the process that makes sense to everyone. I wanted to take the opportunity to go through the zoning. You've seen, you've seen this before, so I'm going to kind of zoom through some of it. The the imagery is is new, but the the content is the same. But I wanted to give you a sense for a little bit more in depth sense for the types of things that are going to end up in the local coastal program versus those that aren't. Using the the gateway area as an example, because that's a new piece of code. We've never used it before, so, you know, just an example here for you. And feel free to jump in and stop me at any time, but otherwise I plan on kind of zooming through this just to give you a sense. Again, a lot of this you're already very familiar with, but the LCP only regulates land uses in the coastal zone. All that stuff that's blued out is inland. It doesn't affect the, the LCP won't affect that area. So it's not in the inland portions. There, the the coastal zone is very complex. In the coastal zone, there are several different layers. The purple here you see is the appeal jurisdiction, so that purple area or pinkish area, whatever color you interpret this to be, are areas where there's basically, it's close to a water body, body. And so the Coastal Commission has reserved the ability to hear appeals in those areas. So it's still in the city's local coastal jurisdiction. But but residents, people can raise to the Coastal Commission's attention an appeal. The striped area is the retained appealed, or the retained Coastal Commission jurisdiction. The city does not issue permits or otherwise deal with coastal development permit issues in this area. I want to point out again, just for.
Can you just briefly tell us where that is? I I'm having a hard time figuring it out.
Yeah, absolutely. I was going to kind of hone in on a couple of the the features here. So this is Samoa Boulevard and Old Arcata Road. Here's the South G Street area. This is most of Zone One right here. Here's the city's downtown, there's the Union Town Shopping Center, here's the Barrel District. So yeah, the Coastal Commission's going to issue CDPs in the retained jurisdiction. They reference our LCP, but they make their decisions based on the Coastal Act. And I want to point out that all of our sea level rise policies, any project that we would do that's associated with sea level rise for the most part is going to be in the retained jurisdiction. So we're going to the Coastal Commission for those decisions anyway. City issues coastal development permits in these areas. So there's not a lot of area where the city is actually issuing coastal development permits. Here's another interesting layer to the LCP. These areas outlined in blue are in the categorical exclusion area. Within the categorical exclusion area, certain types of activities do not need a coastal development permit. Among them are principally permitted activities. Now, the city's current categorical exclusion area is actually tied to the current LCP. Explicitly lists sections of code. And so as soon as we adopt a new certified LCP, those code references are broken, the cat X area no longer has any effect. We're operating on faith that we're going to have something like this in the future. We're going to have to go back and ask the Coastal Commission to allow for a categorical exclusion area and allow us to to maintain this type of land use authority. The the rationale behind the categorical exclusion area is these are urbanized areas that are already developed and, you know, standard principally permitted activities in these areas, the development types that would be built out here have no impact on coastal resources whatsoever. And so within those blue areas, the Coastal Commission has said, hey, look, you don't need coastal development permits for principally permitted activities and a host of other minor types of activities.
So you said we're operating on faith that we can come back later and get the categorical exclusion area?
Yeah.
Is there no way to do that sort of at the same time? Like if you're already meeting with them once a week, right? Like feels like you could talk about both at the same time, but I I don't know.
Yeah, I think it would be exceedingly complex. One thing that we could potentially do if we're feeling nervous is after the Coastal Commission certifies the LCP, the next step would be for the local jurisdiction to ratify that certification by adopting their certified version. Their certified version is almost undoubtedly going to come with some recommended modifications to whatever we submit. I have a lot of faith in the process we're going through with staff right now, but, you know, there's going to be something that the lawyers will catch or a coastal commissioner will catch. And so it'll come back to us with recommended modifications. That process then is that the city council adopts that certified copy with those recommended modifications. So if we're feeling nervous, we could say, well, thank you very much for that certification. We're going to wait to to ratify your certification until we have some certainty around categorical exclusion area. I don't know if we'll necessarily need to get to that, and there may be some process piece that I'm not aware of right now that maybe our coastal commissioner can, commission staff can help us with that would preclude us having that two step process. We may have to have an in fact certified and ratified LCP before they'll go forward with that. I know that's what happened last time. So Abby, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but okay.
I don't, not really my ballpark.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming that that's going to be be the process because they're going to want to know what they're basing their categorical exclusion determination on. So it'll be a little bit of cat and mouse for a bit. Okay, so zooming in on the area that is in the Barrel District, that is in the coastal zone. This is an interesting area. So our, you know, our code is is going to be layered by by nature. You know, we're designing it that way. So in this gateway area in the Barrel District, we're going to have a form based code. Most uses are going to be permitted uses. It's in the cat X area, current cat X area. And so the idea here will be that the gateway will function just as we anticipated it to function. We wanted projects in the gateway area that complied with the form base code to be ministerial. We didn't want them to have to go through a coastal development permit project. We did a process. We didn't want them to go through even a design review. We wanted them to be ministerial. And so my, what what we will be angling for, based, well, my recommendation would be what we will be angling for as an outcome here is to have a cat X area that largely complies with the existing boundaries, but then recognizes our new LCP, including, you know, the gateway zoning districts. So zooming back out, looking at the general plan 2045 land uses, those have also been adopted into the coastal zone. You'll note mostly these land uses are agricultural land uses, the green ones. And so really, when it gets down to it, there's very little area within the local coastal program area that is developable. Most of it is natural resource, agricultural, et cetera, et cetera. And so we really want to concentrate our energy on those areas where we have, you know, the potential for development when it comes to those. Within the the coastal zone, then we'll have citywide zoning ordinance. As I talked earlier about the accessory dwelling unit, a lot of that accessory dwelling unit ordinance will go into the citywide ordinance. We'll have the local coastal land use and zoning. And these will be mirrored layers, so they're not gonna, they're gonna look similar, but they're not going to intersect. So if we change something in our citywide zoning ordinance that doesn't pertain to land use zoning in the coastal zone, we don't need to amend our our local coastal program. That's the intent here. And so the way that they're mirrored is through this concept of overlay zoning. Here's a cartoon version showing the actual physical property that has a base zoning and then an overlay zoning associated with it. This is the exact same thing we did with the the gateway zoning where the underlying zoning on the property is commercial mixed use. And then you have maybe a commercial, you know, rather gateway barrel district as an overlay on top of that. And so this is how we're going to use our or treat our coastal zoning ordinance as well. The citywide zoning ordinance will include those base zones, some overlay zones as well. The coastal zoning ordinance will be an overlay. And again, getting back to this concept, the idea here is that any standard provision or land use regulation that's necessary to regulate density intensity of land use in the coastal zone and or to address effects on coastal resources will be in that coastal zoning ordinance. If it doesn't meet that standard, it's not going to be in the coastal zoning ordinance. So this is an example from our current proposed coastal zoning ordinance where in our zoning in in general, we indicate overlay zone with a parentheses before the letters indicating what the zone is. So here's an example of coastal resource and open space lands, coastal agricultural, et cetera, et cetera. And those would layer on top of the properties that have those underlying resource or agricultural, et cetera, land use designations.
And those densities per acre line up with, if they were not in the coastal zone, we're just repeating it. It's like you said, a mirror of the other one?
They do, exactly, because there's, there's a little bit of necessary overlap. So for example, coastal residential low density, right now we have 7.5 dwelling units per acre as the maximum in the citywide zoning ordinance, and that's what's indicated in our general plan 2045. In order to disentangle those underlying documents from the coastal zoning documents, we have to indicate density here in the coastal zoning ordinance so that they know how densely a property can be built. So this is a necessary overlap. If we wanted to change coastal low density in the citywide zoning ordinance to say 12 or 14 or 15, we'd have to go through a coastal zoning process to update that here. Okay, so let's take an example and kind of suss through what standards are important to be in the coastal zoning, which versus those that aren't. Here's the Barrel District. It has, and if we're looking at this site here, as commercial mixed use, as a base layer. It has the Gateway Barrel District as a combining zone. It has coastal Gateway Barrel as a combining zone. And it has a categorical exclusion, hopefully in the future as an overlay to this. So, so, you know, that's, that's complex to weed through. But the complexity that we set up initially here is going to actually result in streamlining in the future so that property like this in the Gateway Barrel District will be able to utilize all of the, you know, principles and standards that we established in the Gateway Code. Here's an example in the coastal zoning ordinance where we pull in all of those gateway zoning districts. We talk about their their intent. We talk about how they their uses would be handled in the use table. And we give in the use table. handled in the use table, and we give in the use table what the permitting pathway would be for those. There are also additional use limitations that would apply in the Gateway as well. So 2.12.040C1 is something that's specific to agriculture. If you have an agricultural zoning district in the Gateway, it will be principally permitted, but it would also need to apply those additional land use specifications. We also have additional limitations and standards specific, for example, to single-family housing, where Gateway zoning districts would be, would be limited to existing single-family dwellings, new single-family dwellings are not permitted. Because again, in the Gateway District, we're trying to emphasize higher density housing, right? So there's an example where we have to have a specific standard. We have all of the setback standards, those are necessary to regulate density intensity of land use, but then what's not included? In the Gateway, we got very finicky about, you know, stepbacks on upper floors. We got finicky about, you know, active storefronts and what those would look like. We have all these enhanced stepback requirements for particular street frontages. None of those, we would argue, have any impact whatsoever on a coastal resource. They don't belong in the LCP, we're not proposing to put them in there. It will complicate zoning requirements between, you know, the coastal zone and the citywide zoning, if we have to have these in there. And so we haven't included them, and we have explicitly stated to the Coastal Commission, we're not including these. Let us know if you think that there's anything in here that's absolutely necessary to be, to regulate density intensity and land use in the coastal zone. So to date, I think they're still digesting that. I don't think that they think things like frontage design are ultimately going to be something that they want to regulate, or, you know, articulation of buildings, how far a building plane has to go before it's articulated. So we're still waiting to hear back on that, but that's kind of the general approach. So there's a lot like that, that's not in the LCP. Again, this is a little unique, most districts across the state basically take their municipal code, they ditto copy it and submit that as their LCP, and over time, those two paths diverge as you have amendments here or interpretations, and you didn't update your local coastal program, so it creates confusion over time when things look the same, but they aren't. So we're really trying to distinguish that. I think I'm going to stop here, because you've heard about the coastal commercial visitor serving already, and that's, that's what's on the slides next. So any questions on any of that, or we can move on? Okay, that's what I wanted to present to you today. Just happy to dive into the substance and/or we can save it for our next business meeting to dive into anything substantial.
Does anyone have anything substantial to raise at this time, or can we hold it over?
I mean, it seems like, what's the point? We're still waiting for more clarity from the state, so why hash it out and then have to rehash it later? That doesn't seem efficient.
Yeah, my, my objective for these meetings will be that you can tell us if there are certain areas, as you're seeing these amendments, that you're like, well, hold on, hit the brakes. If you can tell us we're going in the right direction, or you can tell us we're going in the wrong direction, that gives me a little bit of, you know, kind of direction that I can use when we're discussing these with the Coastal Commission. I have what I feel like is a pretty good sense for where the Commission is at, based on the work that we've done together, and I'm applying that in our conversations on a regular basis. I want to be able to share this information with you in case anyone's like, you know, stop the presses, we need to go in a different direction, and I can convey that back. So if you're good, we don't have to talk, but if there's something that you want to talk about, we should definitely have that conversation now.
I just want to say, as a practitioner, using local coastal overlay plans across the state, I appreciate this Commission's approach, or this Planning Department's approach, as having it separate and being, you know, not repetitive and irrelevant as amendments happen, because it is very chaotic to kind of reconcile between all of that, and we end up having to do a lot of conversing with various planning departments to make sure we're all on the same page. So I'm appreciative of this, and thanks for doing such a thorough job explaining all of it.
Did anyone join online at any time? Because I don't think we ever opened up the second item for public comment, and I don't want to close it without not doing that. Okay. Is everyone all right with moving on from this item?
We do need a vote to continue to February 17th.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to continue to February 17th?
I'll make the motion to continue to February.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we can move on. Do we have any correspondence from Planning Commission members?
I will be out of town for the next meeting, two weeks from now.
Any correspondence from, oh, sorry, go ahead, Dan.
Sorry, I just wanted to acknowledge my excitement about the trail progress on, from Arcata Skate Park to, to the north. It's just super exciting to see that finally happening, I don't know if you guys have all noticed.
That's good to hear. Any other, oh, yeah, oh, sorry. Nope, I was just, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, there are no other from the Planning Commissioners. I did want to mention two things, one is that November 11th is Veterans Day, everyone knows that, but it's also Planning Commission Day, so we'll be canceling our Planning Commission meeting for that date. And then I also just wanted to ask folks that are interested in economic development and the business environment in Arcata to take our survey. If you go on our website, you can find links to our economic development survey, it's going to be open through mid-November.
Is that linked to the flash survey thing that's happening now?
It is not linked to the, to the flash vote, that's something separate, and that's also something to notify the public of, to make sure you sign up for flash vote, great way to, you know, engage with the city on, on different topics and have your voice heard. This survey is separate, and it's being, it was put together by our economic, by Civic Possible, who's working on our economic strategic plan update. And so this is really tailored specifically to trying to get information about economic development opportunities and ideas for the City of Arcata.
I'm sorry, I missed, is it coming through our email, or do we need to search it?
Look for it on our website, yeah. I can send it to Planning Commissioners, certainly, but...
That would be great.
For the general public.
That would be super.
Yeah.
Okay, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.